Good evening. Today is Monday, September 14, 2020. Today is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the United States of America and to the public. For justice and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We just came from executive session. We are not going back. So it's just a public meeting and then we're done. So we'll start out with Board comments. Lori, you want to start tonight?
Interested in our meeting.
Hi, just, I don't really have any real comments this time. Looking forward to our discussion tonight.
Okay, very good. Teres?
I just want to welcome everybody back and again thank the administration for all your hard work in getting our schools open to what I think I've heard has been a successful start for my kids and others. I know it's hard and it's an adjustment and technology can be frustrating, but we're going to get used to it. And I think the most important thing is that the kids are all really happy to be here and they want to be here every day if possible. So thank you for everybody who's made that happen.
Maya? So do you?
No, I just wanted to give a special thanks also to the Tuckahoe administration, teachers and staff that really, to be honest, the undertaking to get this thing going, it was incredible. And really, it has been so smooth and from hearing from the kids, they are so excited to be back. So I truly want to thank you. It was amazing undertaking and it was job well done.
I just want to echo everyone. Welcome back, everyone. And also again, thank you to the administration, Dr. Goodman, to all the administrators. It's been, I know, a real rough couple of weeks getting ready and we appreciate all the work that you've done. The kids are so happy to be back and we hope we just keep moving forward even with the little bumps along the way. You guys are doing a great job, so thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's all been said, but just great job by everybody. Just so awesome to have the kids back in school and have the school buildings back alive again. And we know how much work was put into you getting that to this point and we really appreciate it. And from my perspective as a parent, what we're seeing so far, great, really, really great. So and even the, certainly the distance learning quality is much improved from last year, the end of last year. And everything is just, just great. So just really grateful and really, really proud of our district. Okay, so that's it. Move on to comments from the superintendent. Dr. Goodman?
Okay, so I know you all received a letter from me this weekend, so I do want to talk about that tonight. I'm joined by Principal Marash and Assistant Principal Kilgallen and we will take questions from the board or the community. And I just want to give you an overview. So good evening, first of all, everybody, board trustees, colleagues who are here tonight and watching, and to our parents and community. Late Friday night, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District learned that an individual at the William E. Cottle Elementary School tested positive for COVID-19 earlier in the day on September 11th, Friday. We did not get paper confirmation from the Department of Health until Saturday morning. The person is currently isolating and all school contacts have been notified first by the school administration. We really, I thank Mr. Marash and Mrs. Kilgallen for calling everybody before they were called by the Department of Health so that there wasn't as much panic to them. I think they felt very reassured and they were really appreciative of that. They were notified again by our administration and then by the Westchester Department of Health and are in quarantine. The district sent three letters, one to those exposed, which had specific instructions and already, and also told them to expect a call from the Department of Health and to answer the call if it came up on caller ID as either the Department of Health or a 518 number. We also sent a different letter to inform teachers and staff that weren't exposed that this happened at Cottle and one to inform all parents of the positive case. The school principal, Mr. Marash, and I worked closely with the Westchester Department of Health to ensure all contacts should be reached. We did this by reviewing schedules very carefully. Ms. Marash did a great job. We asked people who were involved, the adults, we reviewed the schedules and we shared all the information with the Department of Health. They decide who is an exposed contact. Those exposed to this individual are mandated to quarantine for 14 days from the last exposure date and to follow Westchester DOH protocol for quarantine. It is important to note that there are numerous safety procedures and precautions that have put in place, that have been put in place in our district that worked in our favor to keep our community safe. This includes physical distancing, outside activities, daily health screenings, and our planned process for positive cases. We had a plan in place in case that happened. We had a spreadsheet that was very effective that we used and also, of course, our mandatory face coverings. We are most appreciative of the Westchester County Department of Health for their collaboration and guidance. Again, Principal Marash and I were conferencing with them throughout the weekend and they were always available to answer our questions and our concerns. Also, I want to thank Mr. Kilgallen and Mr. Marash who ensured every contact received the support from them and their understandings of the importance of this work. I also want to thank the teachers and staff for their understanding of the importance of continuity of education during this trying time. Our parents have been cooperative and they trust our work and the work of the Department of Health. The individual who tested positive is entitled to privacy and we ask our greater community to exercise judgment and restraint in discussing this incident. Please continue to reinforce with your children that safety measures put in place or for the protection in situations like this and how grateful we are for our community's adherence to expectations. I appreciate the community's efforts, the larger community of DOH and the hours that the school administration spent on this, particularly Principal Marash. I also thank Mr. Kilgallen, Fiona Higgins, and Lisa Malloy, the Principal Secretary, who worked throughout the weekend. The local efforts of our hardworking administration, caring and focused faculty and staff, parents and students, made this a successful transition. Again, Tuckahoe, in this together. I also want to clarify a fact that people may have heard that confused, may have confused people. Another agent, another entity put out that there was a positive test and then a negative test. And what I want everybody to know, I can't identify the individual or what happened, but the Westchester Department of Health and the CDC and the New York State Department of Health treats every test as positive. We cannot assume according to them that the more reliable PCR test was correct. Sometimes you do have false negatives. And, and also a testing of negative, whether you're quarantining or isolating, does not, if you had a positive test or if you have to quarantine, does not remove you from completing either the quarantine or isolation period. So I hope that clarifies some of the questions that, that we've gotten. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Goodman about that or Mr. Marash or?
I have a question for you. Just so that, the protocols, maybe for my, clarify for myself and maybe some parents that are wondering. So when that cohort is contacted and then they are home for how many days exactly?
So the cohort was contacted and they are home, the required quarantine mandated is 14 days. Even if they get a negative test from the date of the last exposure.
Okay, and then the, and then so the staff then also is then teaching remotely or?
The staff teaches remotely. The students that are in, it's being broadcast into that room and Mr. Marash and Mrs. Kilgallen have a substitute in that classroom.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. If the people that have been identified as close contacts get tested, say in five days and they're negative, does that allow them to come back to school or to not isolate or quarantine anymore?
That's a good question. And by the way, they, they recommend that it is five days that the people get tested because that's when they would have the, if they, anything sooner would not be accurate. But according to the New York State Department of Health, even if they get a negative test, they have to complete the 14-day quarantine from the last day of exposure. And again, we are following people, you know, maybe medical people, certainly epidemiologists, some of them may have conflicting ideas about this or, but the bottom line is, we are a public school in New York State. We have to follow the New York State Department of Health, the executive mandate. So we are, we are doing just that.
I have a question. I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway only because it's been asked of me out in the community. Of course, we don't know who the individual is who has contracted or may or may not have the virus. But if that person was a teacher and had students, their own children in the district, meaning that the kids were, their own personal kids were potentially exposed, or if it were a child and perhaps the child is in another class within, within the elementary school or middle school or high school, what does that look like for those kids? Are they also quarantined, like kids from, or kids, like parents?
Siblings.
Siblings or parents, children, et cetera? How did that work?
Right. So the Department of Health, and this is why there is no one, like when this happens, you do this. You have to go through an extensive, this is why it took so long, you know, both with the person, the person who had the positive test or, and, and their parents and with the school to find out who the contacts are. Now, if you have, let's say, a sibling, if they're in your house, that's going to be considered a contact unless they're living somewhere else, right? So that will be considered a contact and that would start, if that student, let's say, if it was a sibling, tested positive, that would start the whole process again. The same, because it's not a contact of a contact, it's just a context. But we would know, we would know that the person has a sibling. Or if, until a sibling was positive, it wouldn't start any process. But they would have to isolate right away and they'd get tested. If it was an adult and they had children in the district, it would be the same thing. Those children would have to isolate unless there was some other reason that they weren't living with their family. So it's, the state education department and the Westchester Education Department really believes in the, the contact tracing as the way, and to do it thoroughly and to follow the guidance as the way to really control this possible pandemic. And again, they take every test, no matter what. If it's positive, they, they treat it as a positive. Even if there's another test that is, has a better success rate, they will still go back to that test, even if it's a rapid test. And then they contact trace from a positive viewpoint. That could change at some other point, but right now that's the way it is.
I don't really have a question, I have more of a comment and that is just that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong when I say this, Dr. Goodman. But, you know, for the community, I just want to just make the point that, you know, a lot of planning has been put into this and we have a plan and we have procedures. And the, the way we measure success here is not that we never have a positive. I mean, I think it's an unrealistic expectation that we as a school district have the ability to prevent anyone from, from being exposed to this. Obviously, once the school day ends and the weekend comes, students, staff, they go out into the rest of the world and they can, they can be exposed. So it's beyond our control. What we're trying to achieve, the objective, is that our school district is not a vehicle for spreading it. So if you have an individual one-off and, and there's no indication of spread, then we're, then we're doing the right, it's working. So it's, it's not fair to, not to say anybody's doing this, I just want to make this, this point, that success isn't measured by there being no positives ever. It's unlikely going to happen again, I'm sure. Success is measured by the fact that it doesn't spread in our school district. So if we don't see clusters of, of spread, then, then we're doing, doing things right. So I just want to kind of set that expectation for what is, what is success, at least in my mind.
I agree, and that's really well said. Thank you. And, and we are doing, and it's all those protective factors that we're putting in such as wearing our face covering and social distancing and all of that and working very closely with the Department of Health and making sure that, you know, we have everything in place. And we, again, this could happen again, but we are going to make sure that we continue being very diligent about our protective factors that we put in place. So that, I agree.
Yep, okay. Okay, anything else on that? All right, great. So move on to the next item on the agenda, which is comments from the Assistant Superintendent of Business. Ms. Lou, do you have anything?
Just briefly, I'd like to say that we are winding down the construction project at Cottle and the middle school. We have just some small punch list items too that remain outstanding that we're working to complete. We received a certificate of occupancy over the summer for the Cottle project and everything was ready for September. Our custodial staff, along with Marty Danko, are working to procure PPE and disinfectant and are working on a revised schedule to disinfect the buildings on a regular basis throughout the day as well as in the evenings after school. We're working with the bus company to properly manage the occupancy on buses. So we've had to engage several extra buses so far and we're monitoring that closely to see usage as well as to determine how many buses we will need going forward. We'll modify that on a month-to-month basis as we know more and we see patterns that emerge of how students are using the buses. And otherwise, we're just continuing to monitor everything that's happening in the district.
All right, great. You mentioned, thank you for the update on the, on the capital improvement project. So I wanted to kind of bring up too, that we do, obviously for the last couple of weeks and months, we've just been dealing with the opening and the plans and everything. But I do want to get back to discussing finishing the field, the Cottle field. It is the last piece of that project. We talked about doing more than the original scope of the project. So I'd like to get back to discussing that now that we're open again. So I know the way we left off last, Ms. Lou, was I think Russ from KGND was supposed to come back to, I think we probably told him to hold off because of what was going on, but I think the way we left off was, he was going to come back to us with some proposals and some, some details. So can we maybe contact him and, and get that discussion started again and maybe invite him to the next board meeting to discuss this?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll get in touch with him and I'll report back when he is available.
Perfect, great.
I also actually have a question about the bus occupancy. So we are using three more buses right now? And what is our occupancy, like how, right now, how many kids are taking the bus or what capacity are we running each bus at?
It's still really early to tell. We devised our bus routes so late in the summer because of how we had to wait to see what was happening that we really don't feel the first week of school was all that indicative of what, how we may go forward. We are seeing that many of the buses on the, of the older grades are not running as full as we had thought, but the Cottle buses are running relatively full. And if we have to run the extra buses for Cottle, we have them available at no additional cost for the high school and middle school as well. So what we're doing is asking the bus company to give us a daily count of how many kids are on each bus and we'll take a look at an average and we'll know more in about a week or so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Next, we have comments from the PTA. Ms. Mealy?
Hi, everybody. I'm Susan Mealy. I'm the PTA president. I want to welcome all the families and staff back to the school year, this crazy school year. We had the opportunity, well, first I just want to say, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but I do just want to reiterate that the PTA is still in business. We are not closing down this year, we're just pivoting like everybody else. And while we're in the process of reinventing our services, we do invite the community to give us input as to what they would like or what they need, or just any, any struggles or gaps that we might help find solutions for. And we invite the staff as well to make suggestions to us because we are here to support everyone. And so far, we've already had some opportunities to do that. We very eagerly agreed to decorate the schools for the first day back. Our welcoming committee rolled out the orange and black carpet, so to speak. And we, and we had, they had the challenge of working on a shoestring budget and had to decorate nine entrances. So that was a little bit of a challenge, but they got creative and got to engage some of the high school students to create some banners and things like that. So that was a nice effort. So I want to thank them. And we also found a way to participate in kindergarten orientation, thanks to Mr. Marash and Mr. Kilgallen. Normally, the PTA president gives remarks in the auditorium. This year, we were able to have a table outside and our communications committee came up with a QC code so that we could get membership going because we can't hand anything out. And we got to meet a lot of new families and I actually think this is a better format. So I would like to request that we do this every year because we had conversations and it was really nice to clear up some misunderstandings, what does the PTA do? The word "membership," I found out scares people. No need, you know, we're all here just to help everybody. So anyway, that was wonderful. And we have our executive board meeting tomorrow night where we will discuss other initiatives going forward. We're also working with Lee Lo on purchasing lanyards for masks so that when children take their masks off, they don't fall on the floor or get lost or get confused or whatever else. And we're happy to be able to fund that initiative for K to 12. One announcement that I just want to make is that we initially had planned the PTA Spring Social for, I forget if it was late March or early April, and of course had to stop that effort with the shutdown. So initially, we optimistically rescheduled it for early October, but now, of course, need to cancel that fully. So I want to just put out there to the community and we'll follow up with a written communication that because of the timing, we had already collected ticket purchases and some donated items and we want to honor those contributions and, you know, do right by the community. So we are asking the community to contact us if they would like a refund on their ticket purchases or if they would like to convert it to a much appreciated tax deductible donation to support the PTA because that is our biggest fundraiser of the year and without those funds, it makes our, our fiscal year challenging. But we respect that, you know, some may just wish to have a refund and we'd be happy to do that. We also had collected some prizes for our raffle and we're looking for ways to repurpose that, like through an online auction or something else so that we can still make good use of those. Membership forms should have been received by all parents, one way or the other. And I think in the upper schools, they were sent out in the parent packet by mail. And I think at Cottle, this was done on the parent portal. But we do ask that you pay dues to help keep us operational and we're asking that this be done electronically to avoid anything, you know, to, to allow a contactless system. So reach out to us, please, if you have any questions about that. So that is, I think, pretty much our PTA report, but I also do just want to thank the retiring teachers, Ms. Benash and Ms. Johnson, whose retirement was announced at, I think, the last board meeting. They were allies of the PTA and we wish them well in their future. And we would like to honor, not to jump the gun, but Michelle Lissio, who's sitting here and is next on the agenda, who also has been a great friend to the PTA and many in the community. But again, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, so I will end my comments there, but just know that, Michelle, you're missed. And then just lastly, if I may, I'm sorry I'm going on forever. I, I want to voice what I think, what I'm hearing in the community, that you guys absolutely rock and roll in taking care of this COVID situation. And, you know, when I saw the announcement of the case, I braced myself for impact, you know, like, okay, here we go, everybody's going to be in a panic. And I'm really impressed by the calm that I'm seeing in the community and I think it's a testament to the confidence that the community is feeling in the administration, in the teachers. You guys just are doing such a good job to reassure us that we're in good hands. And I just want to add one thing to Peter's comment, which I thought was a great one about, you know, how to measure success. Of course, we will have cases. I think one other thing we should look at is if we do have cases, they're not necessarily being, they're not necessarily developing here at school, but they could be outside of school. And I know we all know this, but I just feel like you can't say it enough, that how we behave outside of school is just as important as how we behave in school because this could spread at a party, any kind of gathering, anywhere, and we all have to be diligent so that the schools can stay healthy. I think that's it. So thank you all, administrators, teachers, staff, for doing everything you're doing for our kids and for the community. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Excellent comments. Thank you very much. All right. So as Ms. Mealy indicated, our next item on the agenda is to recognize Michelle Lissio's service as a board member. So in the past, when board members finish their service, usually at that last meeting, which is in a normal meeting setting, the superintendent will say a few words and hand that board member a small little plaque from, from the, from the district. That wasn't able to happen this time around with Michelle's departure because I believe her last board meeting was an 8:00 AM Zoom meeting. So it didn't really, although we all kind of said our goodbyes to her and made our comments, it, I don't think was very well watched, probably, it was probably just us, I would imagine, on there. So I don't think that's really fair. I don't think that would be fair for any board member that, that gave their time to serve on this board, let alone Michelle, who did it for nine years. So I just didn't think that was a good way for her to go out. So we invited her to come back. She begrudgingly is here, but she, she doesn't want any attention, obviously. Those who know Michelle know that very, very well, but she did come with the invitation. So we did want to give her a proper send-off. You know, like I said, I think any board member that serves and gives their time, donates their time for free and puts up with the, the hard work that it takes to do this deserves to be recognized. But Michelle especially being that was nine years, and not just nine years of sitting on a board, nine years of working her butt off, quite frankly. Because Michelle was always prepared, always went above and beyond, did more than what was just expected of her and really led with, with passion. And of course, the last three years, she was our board president and she was, she was very impactful during her nine years here. And two, two things that I'll highlight in terms of her impact, one is, is the fiscal responsibility that she restored to this district. She wasn't alone, it was obviously a team effort, but when she first got on this board, the, the school's finances were not where they are today. And that was one of her main mantras and she sort of kept, was steadfast on that and was a big driving force as to why we are very, very healthy now. And we've said it before, but it's worth mentioning again, the fiscal foundation is so important. Everything that we do now, how we're enduring this crisis, the capital improvement project, the strategic plan going forward, it all has to come from a strong fiscal base. And that's why the, the improvements that, that she made are so, so impactful and lasting. And then the other thing that I want to mention is probably a little more obscure, but Michelle always emphasized equal opportunities for everybody. And, and she always mentioned that, she said it over and over again, and was always a driving force for her. And I think that was important because, look, every district, I think sometimes every organization has outside influences and has certain voices that are louder than others. To some extent, it's unavoidable, but I think for, for a little while in this district, it was louder than, some of those voices were louder than they should have been. And, and she was, she led the charge, I think, to clean that up. And I think this board, which is, which is not tolerating any of that, I think is a, is a byproduct of, of that. And I think that we're in a much better place now as a district when it comes to everybody's voices being equal. It's not, I'm sure we're not perfect, but I think we're in a lot better place than we were in previous years and that's another impact of Michelle's, I believe. So I don't want to belabor on it because I know she doesn't want to, but we do have a little plaque. It's actually not very little. It's more representative of your service. So this, I don't know if this can be seen. So I'll read what it says. It says, presented to Michelle Lissio in recognition of your exemplary service to the Tuckahoe Union Free School District as a Board of Ed, Board of Education trustee from July 1, 2011 to June 30, 2020, and as Board of Education President from July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2020. Your dedication towards improving the education and experiences of all students was steadfast and impactful. As a result of your hard work, tenacity and integrity, Tuckahoe Union Free School District has made substantial improvements in many areas, especially with regard to fiscal prudence. Your strong leadership has now placed the Tuckahoe Union Free School District on a path of continued growth and innovation. On behalf of the entire Tuckahoe's community, thank you from the Tuckahoe Union Free School District Board of Education. District Board of Education."
(applause) One more? One more? Do you have one more?
Thank you. Say something.
Honestly, Pete's right. I did not want to come here tonight, not because I don't still love this place, because I always will, but I did feel that, you know, I did have my last meeting back in June, and I really did feel like it was the appropriate send-off then, and the things that were said and what was voiced then really resonated with me. And I do think that if there is anything that I am the most proud of is what's before me and the leadership that now represents this school district. And whatever part I played in that, I am really very proud of. I think that fiscally, yes, we had to get our house in order. We have grown our space and our capacity, and we are prepared for this crisis that's before us. And it's really kind of why I didn't want to come tonight, because I just honestly feel that everything else is so much bigger, you know? We serve to do the work, and there is a lot of work to be done. So I really just want to thank this board and this administration, the staff, the parents, the students for showing up and working together to get through this. And I do feel that we are prepared, and I am so proud of you all, because I have only heard such good things, and it makes me really, really proud. And thank you. I'm, you know, I served with honor, and I watch you guys with honor, honestly, because it is a hard job. And today's my dad's birthday, and I get to go home, and they're waiting for me, so I'm going to do that. And, you know, you give a lot of time. You do. It is your life, really. And my children were very young when I started this. They ate a lot of pizza, and, you know, I just, and I said it back in June, there were many times I put a thousand children before them, and I want to thank them for that. But I think I taught them something, and this board, you are teaching your children what service is all about, and I thank you for that. And to Dr. Goodman, I could not be more happy to see you here, and I thank you for being here and for leading this district. And it makes me not being here really easy, because I have the confidence that Susan just spoke about. And that's what I've been working for, for nine years, that we would have a community that would be confident in the leadership of this district, and I feel we have that. So I thank you again, and good luck to all of you and keep up the hard work, because you're really doing great. Thank you.
(applause) You did remind me, the one thing I forgot to say, which was to thank your family. Thank your husband and your kids for putting up with all that service, so thank you to them. All right, great. So the next item is our first recognition of the audience. Anybody? I don't think we really have any other audience members. Okay. So nothing there, no takers there. Next is our consent agenda. So motion to approve the consent agenda, items two through six. Do I have a motion? Teraz?
Second.
Laura, second. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. That brings us to business of the board. First item is approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with East Chester Volunteer Ambulance Court for the mandatory coverage of football home games for the 2019-2020 season in the amount of $2,800. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Laurie? Teraz, second. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, appoint Audit Finance Committee. Resolve to appoint the following individuals to the Audit Finance Committee for the 2020-2021 school year. Maria Boyer, Brian Bull, and Robert Brandy. Do I have a motion? Teraz?
Second.
Laura, second. Any discussion? Thank you to those individuals for being willing to serve. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, appoint a fiscal advisor. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby amends Resolution D-38 from the meeting dated July 7, 2020 for Capital Markets Advisors LLC for the 2020-2021 school year for the following rates. For bond issues, $6,700 base fee plus 55 cents per 1,000 par amount of bond issued. For notes issued, $3,800 base fee plus 25 cents per 1,000 par amount of notes issued. Do I have a motion? Teraz? Laura, second. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Next, we move on to personnel. Resolve to accept personnel action items A through G as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Teraz? Laura, second. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that brings us to our second recognition of the audience. No takers? All right. We can go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Any motion to adjourn? Teraz?
Second.
Laura, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming out today. (end of transcript)